If we could call a random of working of the Amherst and Green other schools in order at 5:00 today for the June 27th meeting, stand with a pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call her role.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mrs. Gillis.
Present.
Dr. Messer.
Present.
Mrs. Wackels.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented including the addendums that should be seen today. A motion in second, a motion in second, contents of discussion on that motion. Hearing none, please call a roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Item five this evening on the agenda would be a board recommendation. Item A is that the... Item A from the board is to agree to accept the resignation of Michael Warner as assistant superintendent effective October 31st in order to employ him as superintendent on November 1st, '22 through June 30th of 2016. Permitize the board president to execute the employment contract.
Twenty-six.
Six, what did I say?
Twenty-six.
Sixteen, how long I've said. We thought you put the one there. I thought I said sixteen, I forgot. As we know, we went through a search process. We started that back in May, end of May, right after school. Before school, we had talked about it, and then immediately after school, we started action on that. We opened the search up throughout the state. We did an internal search using our own people. We had candidates apply. We narrowed those candidates down to four candidates. We interviewed all four of them, interviewed the four that we thought was best qualified from paper, and we were very pleased with those four that we chose to interview. We then narrowed that four down to two, of course, Michael being one of them, and then we did the second round of interviews from that perspective. So then we did the last interviews on the 20th of November, and we came to a conclusion after deliberation and discussions and all of the right reasons, we feel that Michael is the person who should be the next superintendent of each of our schools based on the criteria that we were looking for and from the candidates that were in the pool. So with that, I entertain a motion for the board recommendation 5A. Any questions or comments? Okay.
I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed my presentation. I am really excited about his vision for the district. And if you are afforded the opportunity to talk to him about it, I hope I can do that because he has some really good visions for where the district is going.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm excited for this rollout before I can remember. I have a great relationship with him, and I'm excited.
May I say do it?
Well, let us vote. Because I think I know the vote.
Is there any other comments that anyone would like to make or discuss? Hearing or seeing none, please call a roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Yes, I would like to thank the board and the nation for this opportunity. I'm both humbled and honored to be the next superintendent of Amherst following such a great superintendent, Steve Sayers. I again appreciate your efforts in the process, and it was a great process. I thank you for giving me the time to present, talk, to share my vision. Really, it was a great time. I loved talking with you, having a conversation with you. It's stressful times, but again, it was wonderful. So thank you for doing your due diligence for the community, and it was a best way to school this year. I want to thank Steve and Steve Sayers for their support during the process as well. I appreciate that. Of course, also my family. They can't be here tonight because they all ended up getting sick this weekend. So we were planning on celebrating afterward. The vote went well and going out to dinner downtown, but I will probably be going home and taking care of them. I thank my family and all the support I've gotten from staff members and community members along the way. They've been very supportive. I just thank everyone. I'm honored, humbled, and I look forward to just the next chapter in the Amherst School District and working with each one of yous aboard and rest of the district and the wonderful staff that we have. Again, I just thank you so much, and I appreciate it.
Well, that's...
Thank you.
We also had another item on there that we saw in action this evening. Item B would be that we approve Steve Sayers to carry over the remaining vacation days of this year to begin July 1st, but they may be used until the time of his retirement or departure from the district by December 31st, '22. Tony, would you like to make that motion?
Certainly.
Second. You have a motion in the second. Is there comments or discussion on that? So just so everyone is aware, it will probably mean that Steve will probably be with us through somewhere around the third or fourth week of November is what I think we talked about, and then he will be on vacation for the remainder of that time, so on December. We'll keep you posted, but he had planned on using some of that vacation this summer, but due to some issues and concerns, he doesn't think he's going to be able to use those two weeks to go where he wants to go. So he asked that we can move it for that purpose. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels.
Mr. Engel.
And thank you very much for that flexibility. Very much appreciated. Thank you. I don't believe anyone from the public has signed up to a girl's society. I'm asking, okay? So we can go on to item number seven, which would be the treasurer's report. Madam treasurer?
Yes, sir. I would like to do my report as part of the recommendations because I feel, since I didn't get the exhibits out to the board early, that I could just explain them at the same time. So item 8A, which is its separate roll call, is to approve or amend the minutes from the May 9th regular board meeting. Item B then are the special meeting minutes from May 26th, June 6th, June 7th, and 20th. Item C is for the board to approve or acknowledge the treasurer's financial reports for the month of May 2022. You did see those earlier today, but not even have a chance to prove them over the weekend. There is the financial summary, the cash reconciliation, the month-end financial reports for general fund, and Fund 16, the emergency levy, and the May 2022 checklist. You see those every month. I don't think that you would find anything to ask about those. So item D then is an annual ask for the board, and that's to approve the Schools of Ohio Risk Sharing Authority quote or premium for the 2023 fiscal year. I am pleased to tell you that we're actually paying less for fiscal '23 than we were supposed to by about $16,000. I guess it pays to ask, right? First of all, we went out for a bid this year, and everybody, I bugged everybody about it. I bugged Sarah, I bugged Casey, I bugged Steve and Mike to answer pages and pages of questions. We did our regular renewal questionnaire for SOURSA. We did an application for Liberty Mutual and an application for EMC. Those were the three carriers, so to speak. We had a bid as low as $146,000, but the overall liability coverages were far less from $4 million less to $7 million less, and deductibles overall were much higher than what we pay with SOURSA. And then I was able to cost out, if we purchased an additional $5 million in liability coverage in the different areas to match the liability coverage limits with SOURSA, it would have cost us another $20,000 to $25,000. So the $146,000 bid proposal really wasn't effective. So I did end up speaking to our agent, who we enjoy working with, our agent very much, and I got a call from the executive director from OASBO, my professional organization, and Right Risk Management, who is the reinsurer for SOURSA, and they ended up coming back with $16,000 less quote than what they came in at. So we're paying almost $2,000 less than last year. When I say last year, I mean fiscal '22. So there was a question about the type of information that we provide to SOURSA each year. With SOURSA, the basis of that annual application is a series of pretty general, not general questions, but it's generally the same from one year to the next. It asks questions about the enrollment, the number of schools you have, how many students are in which building. It asks for an employment census, so how many employees we have in different classifications. It asks for coaches. It asks for information about school resource officers. It asks for questions about policies regarding essentially safety of our children. It asks for the size of the general fund as far as expenditures are concerned because obviously the amount of business you do would increase the amount of risk you have with cash handling and the like. It asks about internal controls. It asks about the cybersecurity environment. So that was just the SOURSA application. And then there was 20 pages of application for Liberty Mutual and EMC. So we did a pretty exhaustive comparison this year, so I'm really happy to say that we're going to pay less. The next item then, item E, is the temporary appropriations for fiscal '23. You see the staple document. The first page is a detail by fund. That is the legal level of control for the district by board policy. And then the next page is a summary. And the next page is actually the format with which I present to the cabinet auditor for the budget commission. This goes hand in hand with the tax budget and the tax rates and amounts that were approved in January and in April. I don't think anybody will have any questions about that. If you were to be very detail oriented and you would like to add up the appropriations for Fund 001 and Fund 16, it matches the fiscal '23 expenditures on the budget forecast. Item F, if you would like to look at your exhibit 8G, that's fund-to-fund transfers for this year. Because it is four days prior to the end of the fiscal year and not everything is finalized yet, I've given you by fund, a current fund balance and a not-to-exceed amount. The current fund balance today, if that's what I asked the board to transfer, would be $29,192.40 to five different federal grants. But I'm going to ask the board to approve a not-to-exceed amount. That gives me some cushion between now and the end of the month if I have any more journal entries that need to be created that would affect the cash balance in the federal grants. So I'm asking the board to approve not more than $54,813.57 in fund-to-fund transfers. Item G, there was a document for SEDWIC. SEDWIC is the third-party administrator for our workers' compensation and unemployment programs. We belong to the group retrospective rating program, which is really through OASBO. It is a benchmark program. It's another benchmark program. And what that allows us to do, it's kind of like a risk sharing, a group retrospective is somewhat of a risk sharing, and it means that our claims, our workers' compensation claims remain with us for a certain number of years and affect our experience rating. So, but it is definitely a preferential program, and our fee for the third-party administrator is $110 more for fiscal '23 than it was for fiscal '22. I do not have any changes to appropriations for fiscal '22. However, I think I really like this report from UNIS. It shows general fund at the top by function code, and it shows original appropriations. It shows changes to appropriations each month. It shows the encumbrances that we carry over from fiscal '21. And then all of the funds are listed below general fund. This is just a really, it's a big report, and it's tiny, you magnify and blast, but definitely a succinct report of what the business activity was this year as far as appropriations that the board approved. And then item I, One America Life and Disability Insurance. We are changing, another word, benchmark, again, how many times? One America is our current carrier for life insurance. This is a board paid benefit for all of our employees. We got an increase note a couple of weeks ago from One America, not from One America, but from a TPA, and they said that there was really nothing that we could do about it that had been a while since we had had an increase. And one cent per $1,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money, but for the sake of, you know, being difficult and the proper steward of district money, right? Reached out to a third-party administrator in Columbus by the name of Grady Benefits. They work with the Ohio School Board Association Benchmark Program for One America Life and Disability. So, long story short, we were able to, really seamless because it's the same carrier, switch over to the Ohio School Board Association Program, and we will be saving one penny per thousand. That's really only maybe $10,000 savings per year. So it's not that it is a truly material sum of money that we're saving, but to be difficult, I wanted to see what I could do, and we're saving money. And then the final item, 8J, are the demonstrations that I asked the board to acknowledge. That's it. Two motions.
Okay, so we entertain a motion for 8A currently.
Certainly.
And a second for that motion?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the board minutes of the May 9th regular board meeting. So any discussion or comments on that? Hearing none or seeing none? All those in favor, please.
Wrong way.
It's called a roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Different meeting right now.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels. Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Now we will take a motion for 8B through J. Is that correct?
Yes.
So.
Motion and a second? Comments or discussion on any of that information that the treasurer has shared with us?
Thank you for the detailed explanation.
Thank you.
Hearing or seeing none, please call a roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels.
Mr. Engel.
Item nine this evening would be Mr. Sayers.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Engel. I just have one quick item this evening. Wanted to make the board aware that this fall, September, I want to say it's Monday, September 19th, I made me off at AR2 there, but I know it's a Monday in September. We have a professional development day that's been set aside for a full-scale safety drill in conjunction with not only the Amherst Police Department, but with all of the first responders in the area. This is something that we do. We obviously have annual safety drills, but as far as a full-scale drill, this is something we do once every three years. And so the planning process has started for that. Mike and I had the opportunity last week to meet with representatives from the Amherst Police Department, starting to plan for that drill. Great conversation about our procedures, our plans, our facilities, and just getting that ball rolling in terms of getting ready for the school year in general, and then of course, the safety drill. Again, just to reiterate, and I know the board knows this, we're blessed with a wonderful partnership with the Amherst Police Department. Not just the two resource officers that we have in our buildings every day, but just the entire department and the ongoing communication that takes place. So again, that process has started. I want the board to be aware of that. Also wanted the board to know that Mike and I have had some conversation about HB99, and we've consulted with the police department. We've talked to various staff members, teaching staff, support staff, consulted with some other school districts, and Mike and I both agree that the idea of arming teachers is not something that we want to be doing here in Amherst. At least that's our perspective, and that's where we're coming from. So certainly wanted to share that with the board. Not sure if Niola has developed a policy at this point, again, because it's so new, but I wanted to share with the board where we're at. As of right now, certainly the board has a different perspective or take on that. Please let us know, and we can take it from here. So again, just wanted to provide that one update this evening.
So if you read the paper, you saw that I got a phone call about HB99 last week from the paper in regards to the stance of the board. And I said I can only speak for myself because I didn't have that discussion, but I feel that we should just come to a consensus so that if we're going to, if the board has a different view than what Steve has expressed, then we'll have some discussion about that. If we are all in agreement that we don't feel that it is in the best interest of the district to have armed personnel, then I think we should just move forward so that we have a policy in place by the time the school begins. And I know for a fact that some school districts have taken action, whether it's been approved by Niola or just their own legal team. Our legal team has certainly developed that policy. So I guess my question to the board is, do we all feel that we would want to support not having staff and faculty armed?
We can support that.
Can we support? So.
And I would be happy to...
So move forward with that, and then give it a policy back, whether it's from...
We'd be happy to have something prepared.
An educational institution or whether it's just from our legal because I'm sure that legal team is writing policies, left and right in regards to that so that we can have that approved before school starts so that we don't have any issues with that.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring that up this evening because we can either, and again, we'll check with our legal counsel, but it can either be done through the form of a policy or a resolution. So we'll be happy to have something prepared and presented at the July board meeting for your consideration. That way we can communicate that as needed before the school year starts.
Thank you. That concludes my report. Great, thanks. Mr. Warner?
Yeah, one quick item. You know, at the end of June, we're always trying to close out for the school year. It really has a lot to do with gearing closeout financially. We also try to, of course, prepare for the long school year. So it's just that time of year where most of our staffing is completed, but there are always some things that come up. So I just wanted to make it more aware. We do have a couple positions that are still open, and it's early in the process. So if you're aware of any teachers that might be interested, you know, we post it internally and externally. You know, I have one time to go in the summer. So I just want to let the board and public know we have a Nord student position still open, a fourth grade position that's open, intervention specialist position.
Junior high.
Junior high, yep. And then as I'm making sure the board's aware, Katie Burks moved into the treasurer's office, and so now we have Katie Burks' position open, which is the administrative assistant for student services to work with Sarah in that area with student services, special education. So that's a big one, too. All of them are early in the process, so we're not like interviewing yet and so forth. So we have to set those things up. So let everyone know, make sure, check your email and check in on that. And then, yes?
Would you reiterate to the board while we're in open session about the changes in my office? It's your report, but if you could just report to them, they received an email update, but just to make sure that everyone is aware of all those changes. So would you?
Yeah, I think some items on the agenda tonight. Hannah Watkins has completed some coursework and some other licensure procedures to get her treasurer's license. So she is going to be moving to an assistant treasurer role, administrator role in the district, which is awesome for her. And then Katie Burks, who has been working in student services with Sarah for, I think, 12 years?
She's been 12 years.
She's been 12 years.
Yeah, yeah, with me for 10.
Yeah, I think 12 years. She's also been doing some coursework in that field. And so when Hannah's moving up, that created a position of record and benefits in the treasurer's office, and Katie put in for that, and she's awesome. So it's just an awesome move for her. It's great for the district, great for the treasurer's office, but then the domino effect occurs, and now we have a position for our administrative assistant in student services. So that's where we're at right now, and it's exciting. Of course, we have great people all the time that move up, so. And then real quick, I just want to just say thank you. There's a couple agenda items here in personnel where teachers work over the summer often. And I just wanted to just say thank you to the teachers. So many do work over the summer, especially with the new math adoption, 6 through 12. Another as well, our coaches, some of you are here tonight. You know, our AP teachers, our Catholic plus teachers, they have sometimes meetings, seminars over the summer. So I just wanted to just recognize them because, again, work continues over the summer. It's not just a vacation type. Also thank the board for proof some of those hours because, of course, we're... A lot of districts offer that to the teachers, so I'm just proud that we can do that. Thank you for doing that for our teachers. I appreciate it. That concludes my report.
Questions for Michael? Michael, we did not hear anything this year.
Oh, no.
Huh? We did not hear anything this year about the online purchase of school supplies, which we normally have a nice discussion about that before school is out. Are we doing that this year or are we not doing that this year? Because I haven't seen any posts about that. I haven't seen any communication about that. So I was just curious today as I was just sitting there just thinking about what could I ask of Mike?
Thank you for bringing that up. I've actually, I've got some unaware is, I know, oh, look, here's Miss Harry again. Your new principal's here. Are we involved in that this year for online supplies? That's my knowledge as well.
So we aren't offering that?
Not to my knowledge. I was in charge of that kind of last for years.
Yes.
It kind of just moved on to principals. They kind of had their relationship with the company. So last couple of years, they've kind of just done it on their own, and I'm not sure what the transitions of the principals or what would have occurred, but...
So then those supply lists won't be available? Because this will always be an issue, is why I'm going here. The supply list won't be available until the class list is posted, which is, is that correct? Or are they available now?
So preschool through third grade and seventh, eighth grade, sixth, seventh, eighth grade are online? Waiting on boards. That's coming soon.
They're online now?
Yes, they're online now. Yes, the supply list is online.
Because I didn't go online to look because I, because I know we've been pushing everybody to just buy it so that it would not be an issue, and everybody would have the same money. Great. Any other questions for Michael? Sarah?
Just a couple of things from my end of our district. We are, like Mike had said, closing out last year, but also moving into next this year, so we're still doing our staffing things. We have some teacher teams that are working together on summer referrals and evaluations. We've got a lot of teachers who are working with our students through some school year services this summer, and so I'm really grateful for their time and energies. With that, I do also want to share that we have, in our partnership with Second Harvest, in July on the 13th at 3:00, we'll be hosting over at the junior high another mobile drive-through pantry. So that will be in coordination with Jill Marca, our social worker, has been working with Second Harvest to work out the details with that. So that's just some of the things coming up this summer. So that's just some of the things coming up this summer.
Any questions for Sarah?
I don't know about the school supplies. But they are posted online.
So can I, can I just kind of go with Sarah's?
Well, Sarah can give us a update of what we're doing with the apple award.
Yes, I'd love to.
Mike has the apple.
Because I know the answer, because I asked. They both know the answer.
We know the answer.
Sure, the answer.
Right? Right? How about that? In August, that's right.
Yeah, so just so everyone, we had had a discussion back in April about the crystal apple award. And where we will do that at the beginning of the school year based on things because there's not as much going on. So we will recognize those people. That way, that word will come out immediately so that they are recognized. So I think I put Sarah in charge of that and Mike kind of helped her out and then Steve got involved. So I wanted to make that.
It's summertime, so everybody's got a lot of.
So I just wanted to make sure that.
And the bus.
Questions for her. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page with that and that we did not drop the ball in that. We are just revamping when we do that. And then I think we're going to do that in the fall, about moving forward versus in the school year, okay? All right? Anything else for Sarah? I wonder if you have any questions for her? Okay. JBS report. The JBS board meeting is Wednesday night, so I don't really have a whole lot to tell you. We do have a draft of House Bill 99 policy on the agenda for us to review this week. I have it, it just came about 20 minutes before I came here. So I haven't looked at it yet, but that has been a topic that we had talked about, provided that this was going to happen. So we do have a policy that we will review and have a look at it this week. Otherwise, we're trying to get some summer projects done. We're still working very hard on revamping the foundation. We all, we have put together a new committee form from that. And we're going to have to explain about that as well. With that, we're waiting on two, three months before we confirm that they will work on that or beyond that committee. On a board committee, I guess, or beyond that committee. So that's what I have for you right there. Any questions? Any other reports that I'm missing that anyone needs to talk about from any other group? I would just like to thank staff, personnel who helped with the recruiting of superintendent. Because Steve did a lot of reports. Amy did a lot of reports, Steve did a lot of report, Amy did some more reports. But I just want to thank all of the people in house from that who made some contacts, who contacted, developed the questions, as we developed the questions, they developed all the paperwork and everything for us. So it was great, they appreciate it. It did save us upwards of $12,000, I believe, from that perspective. So we appreciate that. And I just want to make sure that everyone is thanked for their efforts in helping us with this. Okay. Personnel recommendations, item 11.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Engel. Number of items here as we prepare for the upcoming school year. And I know the board has had an opportunity over the last three or four days to review all of the agenda items and ask those questions that, that may come up. So at this time, would like to recommend approval of items 11A through 11P.
Your motion in a second, please? Second? Is there any comments or discussion on any of those items, A through P under 11 personnel recommendations? Everyone good? Questions or comments, please call.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wachols. Dr. Messer. Mr. Zappa. Mr. Engel.
Item 12 would be educational recommendations?
Again, a number of items here as we prepare for next year. A number of agreements for our student services. I know we have a number of those contracts that are on the agenda. Handbooks, fees, various overnight trips. And again, I know you've had an opportunity to review these. So therefore, would like to recommend approval of items 12A through 12V.
Your motion in a second? In a second? Mark? Questions or comments?
Oh, that would kind of look at the work, the things under the years.
The what?
The years under the fees. It's 21, 22. So.
Must be updated to 22, 23, obviously. So no, thank you, Amanda. Thank you.
Well, another one would be, so item A, it was a fifth-grade camp fish trip. And you were on the northeast route, but it's not a common issue.
You don't need to.
When, when that question was presented, we did check with legal counsel and he said it indicated to us that it's perfectly appropriate, okay.
It's, it's not a direct impact on you. So you don't have to. The other question that, that I know someone had is that the AP courses, the fees, if I recall correctly, that's because they're purchasing a book, textbook or something, is that correct?
I believe the fees are for the test.
The test, I was going to say, but it's something to do with the, that. Because it's, that's what it is. Because they are a college course for the most part. They are all being taught by Community College, Rolling Green or whomever, whatever school is doing that, right? Isn't that still book-based?
Yep. For AP to get college credit, you want to take an AP test.
Correct. You have to get it. And that, and there's a fee associated with that from that perspective. Because I remember that it's always been a lot of money to do that. But that's, but you're getting really college credit, really pretty cheap.
Yeah, right.
For the whole, the whole course. So I think that's inappropriate, you know, from that perspective. Any other questions or comments?
I have another question, so when we were talking about the safety drill and the fall. Do we have like a policy or like, what am I going to say? Do we have a policy on like the safety, safety measures or whatnot? Does that go on the handbooks or anything?
We have a safety plan that each, that's been developed by each building. In fact, actually, one of the things we're doing is we're in the process of updating those now. And those actually have to be submitted to a state website. So we're, we're actually in the process. And of course, we can, you know, make sure that the board has a copy of those once they're completed. If you'd like to see those, we're happy to provide those.
Will that be here by school year? Or you don't know yet?
Yeah, we, it's yet to be.
Okay.
Still in the planning process.
Any other questions on the agenda items? Not, please call.
Mrs. Gillis. Mr. Zappa. Dr. Messer. Mrs. Wachols. Mr. Engel.
Other questions or anything we need to talk about this evening? Anything you'd like to share or have a conversation about?
We still have 13.
Yeah.
13A through E.
Which reasons are they telling me we need to be done? You told me that before we started.
No, well, I know somebody was a little long-winded over there. I won't say who.
All right, item 13.
Can you thank me for my detail?
No problem, there's just.
Business recommendations, I have a lot of questions now.
Again, five items there, just a standard report from our food service department and then some contracts for prom actually next spring, sponsorship. And then some agreements for our makerspace equipment and updating our cameras actually as part of our ironically safety and security upgrading cameras at the board and Amherst Junior High as, as part of that plan. So would like to recommend approval of items 13A through 13E.
So.
My motion in a second for 13A through E. Is there any discussion or comments on that? I would just like to talk about item E. I, I have a concern. I've always had a concern about the door.
Right, yes.
That goes into gym. I don't know, I don't think it's been on an alarm. But that door tonight, again, is propped open when we get here. That door is propped open every time I drive by and it's locked. And I have concerns, I mean, it's summer, I understand that, but there's still people in the building, okay? And I raised this concern before and I, I thought we had addressed that concern, especially during school, because somebody of those procs opens or kids get in that way every single morning. You know, because I think we addressed that at the south exit entrance. So I just think we need to make sure that as we put this camera or an alarm or whatever on this door, that if it's propped open, we're aware of it. Because nobody can see that door at all.
It, it's just a great point. And ironically, one of the things that we talked about last week, we talked about specific points of emphasis with the police department. And ironically, one of the things that came up was just making sure we reinforce, you know, the idea across the district that doors cannot be propped open or doors cannot be left open. And that we, we talked about that just last week and that's going to be a point of emphasis, you know, as we start the school year and making sure staff are very vigilant, you know, with making sure our doors are closed and locked.
I have a couple of comments. Somebody is saying to me, I don't know if this happens or not, Ashen might know, because I'm spotting it over there. But I'm hearing that students during the day are calling Door Dash to have things delivered to them down the. Does anybody know if that's really happening or not?
I don't know. So. It's not allowed.
It's not allowed. Because I have a parent telling me that it is happening. So I'm just, I think we need to be made aware of that as well. That, you know, people, kids are making, calling orders from somewhere and then they're coming and they're delivering it.
I'll be honest, that is nothing that I've ever been made aware of. So, you know, I would say I've never had that happen, you know, my four-year kids, you know. And we really, you know, let our students know that everything is done to the main doors. And actually, in our handbook, there is no outside deliveries that are allowed. So that's all in the handbook. And we do, at least we can have passed different duties that the teachers would be assigned during the day. Like, you know, if you had your free period, your duty might be, you know, in the south lobby during that class.
Okay.
So there is, you know, staff monitoring those different exits and everything like that.
And that was during school time?
That was during school time.
Well, I can believe that because we used to sign out and go to Hotmail. Have to.
And you could see how doors would be left open.
Because you guys are, somebody, somebody's in charge of opening the doors.
You don't have to get back in.
The door opens, so you're like, wait.
Yep, that's incorrect.
I got detention for holding McDonald's.
But yes, we, we're aware of that and that's an area that will be a, definitely a point of emphasis for us when we come back in.
Okay.
Anything else that we, I think that could we walk to the gym and look at the floor tonight, if we'd like to?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So I, I thought about that the other day and I forgot to say anything because I thought we could have just met down there in that lobby tonight as opposed to here. But I didn't do that. But I think we've all seen photos of the cell phone at the gym. So I think that we could take a little walk down there and that would be great.
And in July, when we meet, we should be able to take a walk down there and see the finished product.
You don't feel that we're meeting down those?
Yeah, we can actually meet possibly in.
We should have a vote down here.
The doors second thing.
It should be, it should be completed by.
Yeah, but I, I mean, we see pictures that are posted and I've had people talk about how great the pictures look.
Absolutely.
And I haven't personally come to look at it, because I couldn't get in probably because. No. So if we can do that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Is there anything else anyone would like to say this evening?
Settle my motion.
We need a vote on item 13.
Oh, shit.
On the business for our.
Can we do that?
No, we have a motion in a second, but not a vote.
Hi.
Please call.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa. Dr. Messer. Mrs. Wachols. Mr. Engel.
I think the motion is adjourned.
We have a motion in a second for adjournment? It wasn't, it's really Mark the one still waiting on you. I have not listened.
Mrs. Gillis. Mrs. Wachols. Dr. Messer. Mr. Zappa. Mr. Engel.